So, yeah, so come on by, 111 Corey Street.
And this Thursday is a chamber meeting at noon in A and B and it's about social media, Facebook and Twitter and other social media. So if you're interested in coming, you can go on our website and register.
Is that a reprise of the one from?
No, because that was about Constant Contact. So this is about Facebook primarily. Let's do, go ahead, we'll go ahead, call the meeting to order. Are you guys ready filming? Okay, let's go ahead, call the meeting to order, do the roll call, and then we'll just hold, we can go on to the minutes, we'll hold the award. So this is the September 15th meeting of the Yellow Springs Village Council. Judy, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Wintrae.
Here.
Askland?
Yep.
Here.
McQueen?
Here.
Also present is Village Manager Patty Bates, our wastewater and water treatment crew, and Jerry Sims should be here any moment. Also present at the rear is Jason Handy.
And if anybody has cell phones, please turn your cell phones off to silent. Thank you, Lori.
I need the reminder sometimes.
Let's move on to the minutes. I think we'll be okay even without Jerry being here. Anything on page one? Page two? Page three? Page four? Page five? And page six? I have a motion for approval.
I move.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Lori, can you review?
Yeah, there was nothing that was from actual residents. There were lots of announcements of things from public agencies. I don't know if anybody wants to call any attention to any of those, but...
Brian, could you talk about their, or I saw that Jean was in here, could somebody talk about the Time Warner Cable situation?
Sure. Yeah, are you gonna talk about that with your manager's report?
No.
Okay. Well, the upshot is that there's, again, sort of a re-scrambling of the channels, so now our community access is channel 5.10 something. So if you have the normal cable box, nothing really needs to change, but there was some technical thing about if you use a GAM device, that that makes a difference. So I would guess if somebody does have a problem, probably the person to talk to is Paul Avendroth. Just give a call, and he has been able to figure those things out in the past. But yeah, but the upshot is they're rearranging the channels.
But I think there were other changes too, not just to channel five, but I guess people will figure that out.
Oh.
There were a lot of other.
There was all the, yeah, I mean, most of them are in Dayton though. There's like a Dayton religion channel and an education channel. So I think the main one for us is our community access.
Okay. Well, let's see, I think we've...
I only got the hard copy, I hadn't looked at the electronic copy, and I was just wondering if someone could say something about the Family Violence Prevention Center candlelight vigil. I was wondering what.
Yeah, it's just a postcard, and it is just an invitation, and it is good to point it out, it's the Family Violence Prevention Center, which is in Xenia. It's a, they have a hotline, and they serve Green County, and they invite us to pause as we remember those who lost their lives to domestic violence and honor survivors who found the courage and hope to break free. And the evening will include survivor stories, reflective music, a moment of silence, and the Closed Line Project, which I can explain if you don't know about that. And that will be at 6 o'clock on October 6th in the Shawnee Park Pavilion on South Park Street in Xenia.
Thanks, Lori. Well, I think we've wasted enough time, we'll just...
We did.
Move forward and do the proclamation. I'm sure Jerry will miss being here. Would you all, I mean, I feel, I was gonna stand up here, would we all like to stand?
Sure.
I tried to rethink. So, guys?
Are we going out here?
I guess.
Yeah, just come out here. So, okay, we've gotta stand so you aren't all, your backs aren't all hammered, we need to get you all on your hands.
Yeah.
Oh, excellent.
Whereas, the Village of Yellow Springs Water Reclamation Facility is a Class II facility serving a population of some 3,500 residents, and whereas the staff of the Village of Yellow Springs Water Reclamation Facility consists of Joe Bates, Superintendent Brad Alt, Operator Two, and Richard Stockton, Operator One, and whereas the Village of Yellow Springs Water Reclamation Facility has maintained a perfect safety record for the last nine years, and whereas the Village of Yellow Springs Water Reclamation Facility has been recognized for this exemplary safety record by the Ohio Water Environment Association as the sole Ohio recipient of the prestigious George W. Burke Award for Safety. Now therefore, the Council of the Village of Yellow Springs wishes to recognize and congratulate the staff of the Village of Yellow Springs Water Reclamation Facility by offering their appreciation for this attention to safety and duty by the declaration of this proclamation read this 15th day of September 2014 and signed by all five council members.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And we have the, Patty, you should go out here too. And I think...
Patty.
Bye.
Congratulations.
Yeah, good job.
And I think you've seen, I don't know if you've seen this picture, we also had, Brian, why don't you talk about that?
Yeah, local artist Kareem Bayrock-Terolou did a great photo shoot of the wastewater treatment plant, and came up with a lot of art shots, so this one's gonna go, I think, in the office, and got a couple others that I guess you guys are gonna take home, signed by the artist, so.
Appreciate that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you also.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Thanks for the work. Hey, thanks, appreciate it. See you around.
Is there anything that, I did, we'll go to a review of the agenda, I'm sorry, gosh, things are so messed up, disjointed. There was one short thing I wanted to add to new business, and that was a joint trustee meeting, getting that scheduled, council trustee meeting.
So we're putting that under new business?
Yeah. That shouldn't take long, won't take long, and I did, I think Judy, on your table is something I put together on that. So we'll move to public hearings and legislation. First, we have ordinance 2014-21 declaring one block of Hyde Road and no parking any time zone.
Now, I realize, I should've done this a little bit differently. You folks had tabled this, and then it was amended, so, but I did not change the ordinance number, so the easiest way to do this is to untable it, and then read it as amended and pass it as amended, rather than assigning it a new number at this point.
So can I get a motion to untable ordinance 2014-21?
I move to untable ordinance 2014-21.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And it reads, whereas it has come to the attention of the Yellow Springs Police Department that there is a need to prohibit parking in the last block of Hyde Road, house numbers 1029, 1490, and 1495 nearest the covered bridge. Now therefore, the Council for the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio hereby ordains that. Section 1, the following section shall be amended to read, 452.14M, prohibited parking areas. M, parking should be prohibited in the last block of Hyde Road at house numbers 1029, 1490, and 1495. Section 2, this ordinance shall be in effect in full force at the earliest date provided by law.
Thank you. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Do we get a second?
Well, we untabled it, so.
I guess so, yes, second.
Sorry, that was what I was wondering.
Right.
Because we had already untabled it.
Well, you do have, it is two separate motions, because you're moving now to approve it.
Oh, okay.
As amended.
Previously to take it off the table.
Okay.
So do we have a second?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, okay.
I got her.
Okay, so we did have this at the last meeting, there were actually two areas that were designated, it was decided to remove the Corey Street section for a little bit more research, but you can see, and I'll turn this over to Patty in a second, you can see the packet does contain not only a map, but a description of the situation, so I think we've got much more information than we had the first time. And I think that it's, it is pretty apparent with the clearance of the bridge, Lori actually kind of saw this ahead of time, when she saw the covered bridge going up, that there were likely going to be some visibility issues, and I think that we have, I hope we have some signage there. Do we have some cautionary?
Jason is here tonight for a couple of reasons, and he can explain what we're going to do with the signage. There is not currently any signage down there that I'm aware of.
Currently, there's no signage. What Chief and I had witnessed was the visibility issue coming across the bridge, cars coming out of Corey Street, the visibility, plus people parking there, you get down on the bike path now. So we're eliminating that as well. The reason why we eliminated the first 50 feet onto Corey Street is to promote that visibility, the cars coming up to the stop sign, being able to give them enough for that.
And cars coming out, so they're not...
Cars coming out, yes. And this will not turn into a billion signs out there. What it will do is basically there are signs, as pointed out in the diagram, that say, no parking from here to corner, no parking here to corner, so you're looking at maybe seven signs instead of one.
Have you, has anybody made contact with Bob Geyer to talk about the visibility issues, and do they have any signage solutions from the other side when it's, where it's not village property?
No. What he said was, to me, and Luke Truby also said this, was, is that it's in the village, it's a village issue, whatever we want to put up as far as signage and everything, they can't mandate, they can't suggest what we put up, but they have not looked as far as on the other side, would be the east side.
Okay, okay. I do know they do, I think they are gonna put signs on the bridge itself that says Yellow Springs, coming up saying Yellow Springs a mile or two miles, and then going to Xenia, so that'll be good for us, but that doesn't have anything to do with this visibility issue.
So people who want to park on this end of town can park on Corey Street, correct?
They can park on Corey Street, although just be 50 feet shy of that stop sign coming up to Hyde Road.
Right, so they just need to realize that if they're wanting to get down to the bike path, they need to park.
Yes.
It's a very wide street, there's plenty of room for people to park on either side of the street.
Exactly, I think it's one of our widest streets, I think 34 feet, so there's plenty of room.
Yeah.
Yep.
Patty, did you have any other comments?
No.
Any other comments from, this is, this is an ordinance, so we will have two readings, this is, would just be considered the first reading tonight, so we'll have the second reading at the next meeting. Any other comments or questions from council?
Does that mean, yeah, we'll wait 30 days to put the signage up?
After the second reading, then it's 30 days after that passage date that it becomes effective.
Right.
So we could put it, technically, we could put it up, but it wouldn't be enforceable until the 30 days.
It might not be a bad idea to just go ahead and put it up.
It would give people the warning that they're not gonna be able to park there and give folks time to get used to the idea.
Yeah, I think, if we're legally allowed to do that, that's probably a good idea, that it can't be enforced if police want to give people warnings, I suppose they can say.
We'll just have to make the...
Verbal warnings, I mean, not, nothing record.
Right, we'll just have to make the police department aware that technically it's not enforceable for 30 days.
Citizens, comments or questions from citizens? Joan?
This is a question on visibility, helping with visibility problem. I'm wondering if we shouldn't be putting some kind of a mirror up, is it some of these things where if you're coming out and you wanna see if there's an oncoming car, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I know.
Mirror on one side, so that you could see oncoming traffic if we're worried about a visibility issue? And you're saying it's not enforceable, that means?
For 30 days.
For 30 days.
It's not enforceable.
Okay, so after you get the ordinance in, it's gonna be an enforceable parking violation?
Yes.
After 30 days.
After 30 days, I understand that. Okay, so do we have enough police presence to be patrolling this? Is this...
It's part of the village, and we patrol it now, it's just that we can't enforce parking issues there because there's no ordinance against them. I mean, it's not, we're not adding a part to the village, it's just an issue that's come up that needs to be taken care of.
It's like any other traffic or parking situation, if somebody either calls and files a complaint, and an officer will come, or an officer will drive by and see it. That's, that's how things happen now.
That's how it's gonna be enforced eventually?
Well, yeah, I don't see any other way. I mean, they're either gonna see it, or somebody's gonna call them.
But it seems to me like, you know, if you're coming out of the, of the bridge, that it might be a good idea, if there really is a visibility problem, to get mirrors up so that you can see oncoming traffic, if that is a visibility issue, that's just a...
Usually mirrors work for corners, it's not really so much a corner issue, it's just, it's, you know, narrow, and it's a one-lane bridge going out into a two-lane thing.
Right, yeah.
So if people...
Can I say something?
Sure.
Should I just give up there, or can I say it?
Yes, no, you have to come up to the microphone and state your name.
Sorry, it's annoying, but...
That's all right. And do I need to state my name?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, I'm Zoe Van Eaton-Maister, and I used to live down near that covered bridge, and for everyone who lives down there, it's pretty common knowledge that the road that goes down to the veil, I think it's actually out of police jurisdiction, I'm not quite sure.
Yeah, that's, it's a private, it's a private road.
There's no actual speed limit on that road, and people fly, like 55 miles an hour, so I think what Joan is saying is very astute. If somebody's flying on that road that goes down to the veil, and they're just, they're not gonna be turning onto the bridge, but they're going 55 miles an hour and going straight there, and you're coming through the bridge to get onto that road that I believe it's called the...
Still corner, isn't it?
It's, I think it's still called Hyde.
Yeah, so it doesn't have any speed limit signs, and it's not enforce, and if someone's coming at 55 miles an hour, and you're trying to come through the bridge, either turning left or right, which you have to do one or the other, and they're flying, you could be hurt, I think. And then you've got people walking, too.
That's unfortunately, that's totally outside of the village jurisdiction. The road that goes to the veil is a private road, they can, since it's private, I think the residents there could decide to put up speed limit signs, et cetera, but...
But what about Hyde?
Hyde is township.
On that side.
On that side.
I mean, the speed limit might be 55 there, I don't know. What, do we know what that speed limit is, Jason?
It's 55.
Yeah, it's kinda crazy, but...
It's insane, and just listening to Joan, I thought, that is kind of an accident waiting to happen.
That's the, that's the corner, and, but like I said, that's really outside, if you wanna deal with that, and it's a great idea, the township trustees are your, are the people to talk to.
I think it is a good idea.
This could be something to add to the township trustees.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So, any other comments?
Oh, go ahead. Well, I noticed that Chief Pettiford suggested painting the curb, which I think is a good idea.
Right, yeah.
Assume that would be part of it.
Yeah, it's, the recommendations are all part of the ordinance.
Oh, okay.
Where there's curb.
Where there is curb, yeah.
Because there's not a lot of curb out there, there's a little, but not a super lot.
So we have a motion, and it's been seconded. Judy, would you please call the roll?
Yeah, and I'm not sure whether I can call you, Jerry.
Don't call me Jerry.
I won't call you late for dinner either. All right, Askland?
Yes.
Houche?
Yes.
McQueen?
Yes.
Wintrae?
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 2014-49, accepting amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission, and authorizing the necessary tax levies, and certifying them to the county auditor.
This resolution is government speak at its finest, so I will simply read the title, which Karen just did, actually, there you go, and it does set the amount at $735,000 for the levy, and I'll let Patty take it from there. This is a pro forma passage of the rates and amounts that is given to us by the Budget Commission, the county auditor, Budget Commission. It's, we need to pass it as part of our tax budget acceptance.
Okay.
Did we have a motion?
No, we didn't.
We don't have a motion yet.
We don't have a motion yet. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, yeah, this is just a pro forma, and you can see we've got the levy, which is the outside millage brings in 708.4 mills, brings in $735,000. We have inside millage of 2.3 mills, that brings in 220,000, and then another 27,000 comes inside millage for the police pension.
Can you tell, say what the distinction is between inside and outside?
Probably not. Inside is what we're allowed to do, I think, without a, without going to the voters. And that's been, that inside millage, and that's one of the reasons we did go to the voters 10 years ago, is that the inside millage had been maxed, our inside millage had been maxed long, many, many years ago.
So what about the outside millage?
That has to be passed by the voters.
That's our levy.
And we did pass it?
That's our levy.
Well, it's the levy.
It's our levy. You passed it twice.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the other thing I had, which was something Lori commented on, can we amend the misters?
Well, I do that when I turn it in, obviously.
I would like them to, they, obviously, somebody went to the effort to change 19, as in like 1999, the, you know, the blank day of, to 20. Why they didn't change the misters, it's kinda irritating to me, that they still send this out.
Yeah.
As if everyone on a council is a mister. So I would actually like to know, is this, do you know, the, I was trying to figure out who the author of the form is, it says form supervised by the state auditor, so I assume that means that it comes from the Green County auditor and is supervised by the state, but I'm not sure. If I were to complain to somebody, which I am planning to...
I would probably call David Graham.
Yeah.
Then I would, I would absolutely, I would actually say, why is it, just don't have anything there.
Right.
Or just put M.
Or just put M, or something, but don't put mister.
So are you gonna follow along?
Yeah, I'll do that.
I will let you do that happily.
It's a little thing, but sometimes the little things really get under your skin.
Oh, no, I...
Comments from citizens, questions? Any other questions from council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. I was just gonna note that...
Oh, sorry.
Everyone in the audience except Jason is female, so I don't think they're gonna really argue with it, so...
And our camera person.
Oh, well, yes. He's working, he's not audience.
And Jason is working too, for there.
Next up on the agenda, or next piece of legislation is Resolution 2014-50, approving an RFQ for legal services.
Whereas the Village of Yellow Springs currently contracts for legal services, and whereas Section 206.01 of the Codified Ordinance of Yellow Springs, Ohio, requires that contracting for services in excess of $15,000 in value must be a part of a competitive bidding process outlined in Section 206.01, and whereas the cost of said legal services exceeded $15,000 in 2014, now therefore, the Council for the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio hereby resolves that. Section 1, the village manager is authorized to solicit request for qualifications for provision of legal services for the Village of Yellow Springs. Section 2, this resolution shall become effective immediately upon its adoption.
Thank you, can I get a motion?
Second.
Okay, we always have an annual contract for our village solicitor that provides legal services. In the nine years that I've been on council, we have actually never gone out beyond, we've always simply renewed our contract with Coolidge Wall, we have never sought additional RFQs, even sought, you know, to look at other firms. I mean, their prices have changed, typically their fees have increased every year, but we just decided it was time to, nine years, probably 10 years was certainly long enough to be with one solicitor, and we're just interested in exploring other options and exploring the world of municipal law. So we have a, we have a proposed RFQ, Patty and Brian, I think, both worked on that, so one of them could...
I'll let Brian take this one.
Well, you know, one of the things that I thought was great is Patty had already found a template that fit a lot of what we needed, so we just kind of looked at what were sort of the key issues we wanted to make sure a firm or attorney would be aware of, so we made some edits there. Otherwise, I really like that we have the cover sheet that just talks a little bit about the community that you're working with, and understanding that, you know, diversity and some of those other elements are so important to us. So I think it's a great document, and I concur with Karen that it is important for us to, you know, sort of see what our options are, and come back with the best services, so...
Any other, any questions or any comments about the proposal, or about the RFQ, any council members? I would just, when, just the formatting, fix the formatting.
Something off in here. I actually want to say the same thing, so yes.
Nothing big, but just...
There's just a big gap under 5, that doesn't need to be there.
And where and how are we advertising?
We will do our normal Yellow Springs news, we'll publish on our website, we will probably send it to the Ohio Bar Association. I'm not sure if there are any other professional groups, Brian.
Yeah, I was trying to think about, so what about like...
Is there a municipal law group?
It seems like OML, even OML. I'm assuming these guys are all...
Yeah, OML, and we could even do the Dayton Daily News to get a broader range, if that's what we choose to do. I mean, I hadn't, hadn't really decided on the Dayton Daily News yet.
I mean, we might even be getting people from Columbus, too, so I don't know if they're necessarily limited to the Dayton Daily News. Are there any clerks associations, or could you maybe do a little research on that? I mean, I would say...
The wider the better.
Right, and I think all of these are, except for the news, unless Diane decides to change her mind about how she runs her business, will be paid, or will be free, no, I'm just kidding. No, everything else is free, so, I mean, if we're doing web, I mean, most of it's probably gonna be electronic, so we won't have to pay for any of it.
And what about the AG's office? I mean, is it possible to...
No, I don't, I've never seen any kind of a listing on their website for that kind of thing.
Okay.
I think the OML and the Ohio Bar Association are probably the most visible of those.
Okay.
But there's, there's no, like, sub-organization, like in Ohio Municipal Attorneys League or something?
Not that I'm aware of.
I'll check, because I was just thinking about, you know, for some of the Sunshine Law workshops we've gone to, the one that we went to, I mean, there were excellent speakers, so there's gotta be some kind of list.
Yeah, the AG puts those on, and I mean, there are, there are some firms that actively participate in those kind of things over and over again, but I think, I think we'll be able to get it out pretty widely.
I think between the three of you then, we can... And, you know, I guess if there needs to be a second tier depending upon the, depending upon what kind of responses, then, you know, in some respects, I hate to limit it to the Dayton Daily News, but that's certainly the closest, it's within a 30-mile radius as opposed to a 60-mile radius. Okay, I guess we can, all those in favor of this legislation to solicit... Okay, I guess we can, all those in favor of this legislation to solicit for legal services, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next on the agenda is citizens' concerns, and that's for anything that isn't already on the agenda. And if you will come up, we limit your comments to three minutes, and you need to come up and state your name. Anything? Okay. Seeing and hearing none, I'll bring it back to council table. Old business, the first item of old business is a review of the street musician agreement. I will turn that over to Brian Housh.
So for the last two Public Art Commission meetings, we have reviewed the pilot policy that we looked at. We haven't really had much more feedback from the last time I reported on this. One of the recommendations, or suggestions, was to extend the period to two hours. The Public Art Commission felt that, that we should not extend that, so that was one thing that they suggested not changing. I would tend to agree with that as well. What I tried to do, although I didn't cut it very nicely, but I tried to think about what this could look like on a card. I had initially wondered if we could get it into quarter sheets, but the only way we'd do that is if we, you know, get basically summarized it.
But can't you do a front and back? It seems like you could do a front and back.
That's true.
That the bullets could be on the back and the rest of it could be on the front.
That's a good idea, and so.
Card stock, and then I think that would just be much easier to handle.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, word off it.
Yeah, works pretty well.
It's a slightly smaller font.
So, and this was kind of a last minute, just, I thought I'd see what it would look like. But yeah, I like that idea of front and back. And then I think we have said that we would, all our officers would have a copy of this, and we would provide them for downtown businesses so they can have to lead as well. So I think we've done a really complete job through the commission and through the citizens that did participate to vet this. I think it's, from what I've heard, it's been working the few times that there's been a call. I honestly haven't heard about a lot of calls, Patty, I don't know.
I haven't either, not lately.
I mean, there was one that, that I came and spoke to, a drummer about, and one situation where we weren't able to get an officer there right away, but the drummer did stop after an hour. So, so I would say that we should move forward with this, yeah.
The amount of downtown busking has diminished greatly.
Yes, the weather's gotten colder.
Well, I think it's potentially because of the agreement, but that's, it's, for whatever reason, it's fine. I mean, it's, a lot of our regulars have not been, have not been performing.
Although I have seen some new folks, so, I mean, things change.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, thanks.
So, okay, so that was just a report, and council is in support. Next is an update on the community policing forum. Again, I will turn that over to Brian. That is being coordinated by the HRC.
That's right, yeah. So we met last Thursday and had a great meeting with, the chief was there, and Patty and both sergeants as well. We came up with quite a few topics that could potentially be discussed, but one of our experts in the room, Fred Bardenstein, who's done quite a few of these, actually specifically forums related to police-citizen interactions, recommended that we limit it to 90 minutes. I think that's a good idea. This doesn't have to be the one and only forum, and I think everybody's open to a continuing process, depending on how things go. Some of the recommendations that have come up is that, similar to the village manager search, we put out boxes again to gather questions from our residents. Certainly, we can take questions through Judy at the clerk email or by contacting any council members, so we want to, you know, keep that information flowing. And we have set a date for October 23rd. That's a Thursday, so we were suggesting 7:00 to 8:30, and of course, it would happen here at the Brian Center. And that would then mean that the deadline to get any questions prior to that, we determined October 17th would give us enough time to process all that. One of the things that the chief said he would do, which I thought was great, is since an hour and a half, we want to maximize the time for questions to be asked by attendees, that he could put together a report that answers a lot of those questions ahead of time. So, you know, we could have that at the forum, and again, if we close off accepting questions by the 17th, he'll have time to put that together.
So then the forum would be like follow-up questions, effectively?
Yeah, follow-up questions, and then just more of a chance for attendees to, you know, get, elaborate on certain issues. We thought that we would probably pick four topics to, you know, start with sort of an introduction. Some of those topics, Patty, do you want to mention a few that?
There was SWAT and the Drug Task Force, I know were two of them. Community policing.
Community policing.
Community-oriented policing was.
And we talked about how maybe the YS News might want to talk a little bit about what that means to kind of get people thinking about how we tailor that to Yellow Springs.
Right.
But we realized, I mean, in total, there were eight or nine topics that could have been discussed. We thought that by gathering the community input, that would also help us narrow that down.
Right. Forfeiture, general communication issues.
Right, we talked about budget, maybe, maybe not. I mean, so, you know, I think the key is sort of getting those priorities. The HRC is planning a special meeting on September 27th to do a, and that's a Saturday, by the way, but to do the final planning. And we have three facilitators that have come forward, Jaylen Rowe, Aaron Sari, and I already mentioned Fred Bardenstein. So I think that's a great group to guide this, a lot of experience. And, yeah, I think everyone came away feeling really good about the, everyone being interested in making this forum meaningful and doing it again, if that makes sense.
Okay. What time is that meeting?
1:00 PM, and that will be.
On September 27th.
Yes, right. And if we could publicly announce that in the arts room, we thought.
Any questions or comments from council members? Citizens, questions or comments? Any other comments from HRC members?
Okay, great. So, I mean, do we need, do we need to do anything to move forward with those?
We actually have, we have two more meetings, so just, why don't you just maybe do an update, another update at the next meeting? I'm thinking that you may have the boxes out, maybe not, maybe.
We thought that we could put them out on the 29th after we had that meeting on the 27th, 'cause that, that gives over three weeks.
So are you, are we satisfied? I guess I was a little unclear on the actual topics. Are you, you said SWAT, Task Force, community policing, and one other item, but then I thought you also said that after you get the questions, that that might change? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
That if there's a preponderance of questions on another topic?
Right, like, for example, training is, was one that was proposed. So we thought we'd have, and I think we could even put it on the boxes here, some potential topics. And, yeah, we thought that we would kind of see what the consensus was that people wanted to talk about.
Okay.
So.
What if people don't have questions, but they have concerns? For example, the Drug Task Force or the SWAT? I mean, those are two things that there's certainly people who would like to see us not be involved in those two things, so.
But I, I mean, I think, I think that the forum, I think forum, first of all, should give an opportunity to explain the rationale, what those, what the Drug Task Force is, what our participation is, and so, so maybe an introduction of five minutes or so about it, and then, then certainly an opportunity for questions. I mean, I think that's what the purpose of it is.
And I think that was the format that was discussed.
Right.
Was that, you know, if you have four topics in an hour, the first five minutes are for a brief explanation of that topic, and then the other 10 minutes are for questions and concerns from the floor on that topic.
So if people have, if people have questions or concerns, they could certainly write it on a card.
Yeah, we'll.
And put it in, and, and it can be transferred into some kind of a question, like, here is a concern from a villager, how would you respond to this villager?
Sure.
Right, that could be turned into, so the villager wouldn't necessarily have to try to figure out how to make it into a question and to state their concern, and then, and then the committee could say, how, how do you respond to this villager's concern?
Right.
Right, and I think that, at the end of the day, probably HRC is gonna take all of those cards and prepare a report of some kind for council.
Yeah.
And that would address someone that had a concern and wanted to make a statement as opposed to an actual question.
Definitely, yeah, and that was, I think that was one thing that was nice also about the village manager searches, we compiled everything that we got, so I think we should do that again, yeah.
Into a nice document, yeah, that was helpful.
We'll have to bring Bettina Solis back. She did that.
I mean, I think, I would like to see this be a two-way street sort of thing. Information flowing from the police department and information flowing from the community to the police department, and out of that flowing, some things, hopefully some things will change, some things will happen. I mean, that's why we're doing it, because we want some kind of changes to happen.
Right. Yeah, and I think to, you know, sort of emphasize that Fred was really cognizant of that sort of need in this format, and that's why I was really happy that he's willing to moderate.
Yes.
Because he's done it in Dayton, he's done it in several other states and New York, so that's invaluable.
That's great.
Yeah.
And I don't believe there were any other comments from citizens? So will, you'll give an update at the next, at the next council meeting?
Yes, yes, because we'll have met on the 27th, so we'll have all the details.
Next item on the agenda is the Charter Review Committee qualifications, and we talked briefly about it at the previous meeting, about the, the need to look at our charter. It's been at least, I think we decided it'd been eight years since we had done a charter review. And at that point, it was suggested by John Chambers, because there were a number of provisions in our charter that were, ran against state law. So he said that there were things that we had to fix. We put a commission together that then really goes through, the commission will go through the whole charter, see if there are things, you know, certainly we'll have legal counsel review it and tell us if there are any, any parts of it that are against state law. Then we will have this commission go through that will consist of two council members, at least five people, and the village manager, and what other staff? Would it be the clerk? The clerk? And see if there are other provisions that we have in our, in our charter that are cumbersome, unnecessary, not, kind of not in keeping with the direction we're going. I think we discovered when we did the referendum, when the referendum issue came up, that some of the language and how we required that to be done was pretty cumbersome, and we can change that. So this commission will look at, at basically the charter from beginning to end and make recommendations. And again, those, it is, it is legal, it is the law, so it will be in consultation with the solicitor, and those all come to council. We'll deliberate on those as much as we need to, but the goal is to have them, have everything completed and ready by probably sometime in the first week of August of 2015. These have to be voted on, so we would want, we would want to get them on the ballot for the November election, so we can, it will be the council, this council, that proposed the charter amendments will be responsible for seeing that they get passed or don't get passed, but we won't, it won't be, we won't have to revisit it with a potentially new council. So Judy and Patty think both provided some information, an application. Basically, the first page will be what goes.
Why we're looking to update.
Yes.
Can you talk into my camera?
Hello, hello?
Yeah.
One, two, three?
Yeah, good.
Okay.
I don't know what I did.
Who knows? But thank you.
So the first sheet basically is, will be the ad that goes in the paper, is that correct? So the ad that goes in the paper, just describing a little bit about what, what it is, what the commission, the makeup of the commission, and then asking for information. So we're asking people to submit an application, a letter of interest, and a resume. On the, on the second sheet is the application that asks for name, address, all that kind of detail, and then there are a few questions that we're asking just to. Oh, well.
We're okay.
It's all you come up with.
Okay, yes, just hang there.
Just to get a feel, I mean, I'm somewhat wondering, because, because these questions are really almost like a resume, and I'm almost wondering if, I would say.
Or like a letter of interest.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a lot to ask.
What I thought is, asking for the application, because it is, you know, basically narrative, a resume, and then if someone wants to elaborate, they can optionally also include a letter of interest, but, I mean, I think the application and resume would cover it, so.
So you're saying take off the letter of interest?
I don't think we should require it.
Yeah.
Well, I think what we should do is, I hate filling out forms like this where I have to either print, I, I mean, I am a computer person.
Right.
This would irritate me. So I think it would be nice if it was more computer-friendly. You could put all four of those questions and say, answer these questions on this sheet or in an attached letter.
I mean, I assume that the, that this would be electronically fillable, that we could do it in a way that would be electronically.
It's not set up to be that way.
Right.
It looks, and it says, please print.
We have.
And using.
You can do that with Adobe. Can you set it up? I can help you set it up, I could.
Yeah, I've not done it before, but I can't be overly.
Yeah, fillable document. I mean, the other thing we do for HRC is we, it's in Excel, and so, you know, there're boxes, and people can type into them. I mean, that's real simple, but of course, a fillable PDF is nice.
I'm not, I'm not too thrilled with the second question about, are there specific concerns you have about issues in the Village of Yellow Springs that should be addressed by the village charter? I don't think that's what this commission should be about. The commission should be people that understand the law and that are interested in working on updating it, not somebody that has personal issues that they want to bring to the commission. That, they can do that at the, at the council meetings, or they can attend the Charter Review Commissions, if they have particular issues that they want to be considered, but I don't think that should be part of the commission itself.
This application, did, did you find it, Judy? Or is there a rationale for that question?
Well, frankly, I saw it as a leading out.
That's what I thought, too, was that if you do have some strong feeling.
Simply because that's not the purpose of Charter Review.
Right.
I mean, I saw that as a way to sort of identify if folks were really having a specific axe to grind versus understanding what Charter Review is all about. So no, I don't think that it needs to be there as long as the.
And I think, why are you interested in serving on the Charter Review Commission takes care of that?
Yeah, I agree.
Yep.
I think, just get rid of, the simpler we make it, the better. That's my main concern, is it should feel like pretty straightforward, and so if we can make it three questions instead of four.
Well, how about if, I'm just sitting here kind of writing something, what if we say, submit a letter of interest and a resume, take out the application, and then say. submit a letter of interest and a resume, take out the application and then say, letter of interest should include the reason for your interest, your qualifications and your willingness to meet on a regular basis?
I agree, I, I think.
Yeah.
I agree.
That way you just don't even do the application.
I agree.
I think so.
Right.
People have to include all the basic information on this.
Well, and, and actually that last, that last piece, that question number four should probably be integrated into the, into the advertisement actually. Because.
And that's where Patty's suggesting it, so that, that makes.
Well, but she's, I thought she was suggesting that it be part of their response letter.
Well, it should be, but if you tell them they have to include it in the response letter, it's going to be in there.
Yeah, I think it, I think we want it, want it in the letter.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm much more comfortable with that, I don't like.
You can just take out.
I don't like filling out forms.
Yeah.
I mean, and obviously, you know, and I think it does say, they obviously have to give us all of their contact information so we can get back in touch with them, so.
Anybody who doesn't give us contact information probably doesn't.
We'll just see about the employer.
Any other comments or questions Jerry? Does this look good to you? Sit, Mary Ann? Citizens, comments or questions? Okay, so I think Patty and Judy have heard our comments and we can get this in the papers quickly as possible.
Will do.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is a skate park update and I see that Mr. Handby is here and he and Brian and the Public Arts Commission have been talking about the skate park, so I'll turn it over to Brian.
Yeah, I might, I'll just kind of give sort of an overview about the, what's been going on with the Public Art Commission, so we've been looking at it for a while and, you know, I think where we're at now is we want to get an engineering diagram so that we can get an RFP out and ideally get something done before the end of the year. Now, there were a couple of things in our packet that I think are really helpful. I believe Jason and the chief and Patty sat down and kind of looked at our space out there overall, just to think about what's going to be happening, the Verizon Tower going in, you know, our plan to upgrade the skate park, the plan to put in Safety Town, which the chief had talked about at an earlier meeting, which is about a small village to teach kids about safety, mostly targeting kindergarteners. So what we're looking at right now is taking part of the existing tennis, tennis courts to do that and the other part to do a smaller version of a skate park for younger kids, so it's safer, so they can practice up, and if you look at that diagram, it's nicely positioned by the existing playground, which we're planning to upgrade as well. Basketball courts would stay where they are. So that's kind of a, a look at the area, the Public Art Commission likes that, I like it, I think it's a great plan for integrating the things we want to do. Now, the other diagram that was in our packet was a, a concept that was put together by one of our local skaters based on information that he'd been gathering from the community. So what we are hoping to do now is again, get an engineering firm or one of these skate companies to do a design as inexpensively as possible or free if that's even possible so that we can then put together the RFP. Jason, do you want to add anything? Okay, Patty?
I did get an email back from Choice One Engineering today, they have the name of a gentleman out in California who, who did some basic drawings for a local park and so they're trying to hook me up with him and I'm also waiting for Christine to get back with me about Rick Campatelli.
Right, and she did reply to my email, so she's, she's working on it, so we've got definitely things going on. We, you know, in the ideal world, it would have been great to be ready for, to approve an RFP at this meeting, but I think our hope is that by our next meeting, that we can have that together and then if it looks good, be able to put that out and still pour some concrete by this year.
Can you say more about the Safety Town thing?
Yeah, so Safety Town is, they do it in many municipalities and police departments essentially build streets, have little cars and things and are, at a miniature sort of fun way, teaching kindergarteners, sometimes preschoolers about safety issues, so how to cross the street, how to deal with traffic.
Sometimes issues to teach bicycle safety.
Yep.
All that kind of thing.
And I think, actually this was the end of last year, Chief Pettiford had talked about that this was one of the things that he wanted to bring to Yellow Springs and we have talked a lot about the lack of use of the tennis courts, the basketball courts get some use.
Definitely they do.
But the tennis courts, I've, I've seen one.
Rarely.
Yeah, one time that I've been here in three years, people playing. So we thought it'd be great to carve out that space and then since it's already fenced in, we can move some of the smaller equipment for younger kids who are a bit intimidated at the main skate park and that would be easier for parents to watch their kids when they're at the playground. And there's been a lot of support for that. I guess some other things that might be good to mention are that we're looking at the security camera issue so that with the Verizon Tower out there, we can minimize the vandalism that tends to happen because the skate park is so far back. That's also why we're looking at, you know, how can we see out there more clearly?
And removing the tree.
Yeah. Yeah, what tends to happen is late at night, there are a lot of broken bottles and things that we see the next day and I, I don't think it's the skaters out there, but it would be good to be able to have better lighting, better visual over that area. So, exciting, I think, yeah, I think we've got something coming together that's going to look really great, so now we've just got to get the nuts and bolts.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to new business, and I can't believe how far ahead of schedule we are, I love it. Proposal for artistic trash can options, I think Patty may have, I think we may have talked about this at a previous meeting about the liners that we need for the trash.
We did, it was in my report.
The existing managers' report.
The existing trash cans that were added to Xenia Avenue and Dayton Street a couple of years ago, metal bottoms are starting to rust out and they're also not easy to empty. Rumkey isn't very happy with us, so we've got, we've got an option, we have to add liners, that's one of the options we have, and unfortunately adding liners to how many cans?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six cans is.
Yeah, we, we were ordering some.
Sixty liners is thirteen thousand dollars just for the liners for the trash can, so that kind of got people thinking, so do we really, if we can, if we have that much money, if we're going to have to spend that much money, is there a better way for us to spend that money and get a better product? So that's where that started and again, we took advantage of our Public Arts Commission and they spoke about it at their last meeting and had received a, a proposal from artist Katie Seidel and Beth Holyoke to re-prive their ceramic trash can, so I'll turn it over to Brian to finish.
Yeah, so I, I think most of us should be familiar with the mosaic trash can that went in, it's been about a year and a half in front of Current Cuisine and actually it was two years ago that Beth and Katie put together a proposal trying to see would, could businesses fund more of these trash cans, you know, was there possible funding through grants and whatnot and suddenly when we realized spending thirteen thousand on liners versus maybe doing something cool that would enhance the downtown and also take advantage of their work as well as something really sturdy. So what their proposal is, is to take the old aggregate trash cans that we have, which is what they did with the posse mosaic one, make those really sturdy with the process of doing all the clay and everything and we have twenty-seven, I believe, that are still usable, a few of them didn't hold up so well, but in general, they're really sturdy, easy to empty and that sort of thing with a few adjustments and their idea is to pair a mosaic one with just a straight-up recycling one and they would still do some kind of cementing ceramic thing with it, but it wouldn't be tiled and it would be clearly marked that it's recycling and that we kind of alternate those downtown. The Public Art Commission recommended, and we talked about it extensively because, you know, the, the cost issue, even though that's really council's focus, was something that I think everybody's sensitive to and how do we balance this, but Katie and Beth think they can do three sets in about two months, so the recommendation that we finally got a majority vote on was to try that out, try three sets, see how they look interspersed on Xenia Avenue and then go from there. Now, one thing we did learn, I think last time, at our last meeting was that the current trash cans can be used in the parks because those are ones we empty ourselves, so we can just put plastic bags in those and not go through the expense of the liners, but Rumkey, who empties the trash cans on our main streets, will not empty trash bags.
It's too much time.
Right. So I think, Patty, did I?
You've covered it.
Okay.
So, so what was the thought about paying for the three sets? Because that's not listed here.
Yeah, that's in the, in their proposal, they mentioned that about every two months they could do three sets, so that would be, you know, three mosaic with three recycling cans. And so since, you know, we thought in the next couple of months, we could see what those look like, install them downtown and then, you know, decide from there, is this something that we want to do more of, but I don't think we have to invest in the full twenty-seven at the get-go.
But at the same time, I thought the decision was also to go ahead and put out.
Right.
The rest of them, just not decorated.
Right.
Because of the problem that we're having, is that.
Exactly, so that was the second issue, is that as a short-term fix, we do need to do something about the rusted-out cans, so Jason had recommended that we put out the rest of the aggregate cans in the interim and then roll things over and see how things look.
And the other piece of it is, is new lids.
Right.
Because the lid, the, the one that's on the cans that we've had are open, they get wet inside and then it's hard for them to empty, so they're looking, staff is looking for something that's either has the, the total cover, the total dome cover.
Or rain.
Or at least a rain guard on the top to keep the rain off, so those would be ordered also.
So, so is council being asked to approve the idea of taking and paying for the first three sets and then evaluating it, is that?
Yeah, I think there are two things we have to approve, that and then also, you know, this short-term solution of putting the aggregate cans out there to replace the rusted-out ones.
I'm very for it. I mean, I'm not real, I hate the aggregate cans when the aggregate, but it's, you know, it's better, Jason said they're better cans, they're much more sturdy, they are just, you know, they're better in that location, so getting those back out, making it easier to empty and I would, are we, at the same time, will you get all of the lids, is that something that you all?
We'll probably go ahead and order all of the lids at once, it doesn't make sense not to.
Have they found a lid that fits these cans?
It's.
Thank you.
I believe Patty was looking into that and I think that she has some good ideas, but again, all we have to do is order twenty-seven because that's how, how many aggregate trash cans we have up there currently.
Right.
Right.
And keep in mind, what Brian didn't point in is that the, the metal trash cans that are on Dayton Street will stay there, we'll just take the liners out of the ones, the good liners, out of the ones on Xenia Avenue and recycle those to keep them. So those will stay there, only the aggregates are going on Xenia Avenue.
Okay, okay, so is it just that the Dayton Street ones haven't rusted out yet?
We have enough to make, some of the Dayton Street are rusted and, and a lot more of the Xenia Avenue are rusted.
Right, because they get.
Well, Jason's crew will switch them out so that the ones on Dayton Street have two good sides.
Right.
And then the, the rest of them will replace over to Xenia with the aggregate and we'll take the ones that are rusted out, repair them enough that we can put bags in them and use them in the parks and maybe Summit Mills Lawn if we have extra, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah. And I just, I feel like this, the decision to replace all of those cans was made rather hastily by the village and we didn't, I think it wasn't a good process and I want to apologize to the village that we got these cans and they turned out to be such a big problem so quickly. That's not good use of public funds.
Right, I agree.
Well, and a good reason to have a Public Art Commission.
Yeah.
So.
And I, what I, what I think we should also do is, is not for the first three sets, but as we move forward, I think we should go look to, to, and look for some foundation money, potentially looking for, look for some matching money to bring the cost down a little bit more because by the time we buy the lids, they will be a little bit more expensive, but I think they're going to be much more functional because I, because the, the recycling will be much more apparent and now nobody knows, even though there are recycling labels on top.
It's not clear.
People are not being, so.
They were a mistake all around.
Right, yes, so.
And one thing that Beth and Katie do mention in their proposal is that they can put, you know, sort of plates on there, so we, we could consider business sponsors and, and other kinds of, you know.
Memorials, et cetera.
You know, so, and I think we should look out for that. One thing that was mentioned is how would that affect placement, because we've got to kind of balance the two, maybe a trash can can't go in front of the business that wants, you know, to sponsor it, but I think we should be open to that and look at, you know, how we can bring down the cost.
Okay, so council is, let's somebody make a motion to purchase three, three sets?
I, I move that we agree to purchase three sets as outlined in this proposal by Ms. Seidel and Holyoke and that we also bring back, is this proposal also?
The old.
The old ones for Xenia Avenue and utilize what can be used of the present ones on Dayton Street.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. And then I added a joint council trustee meeting, it was mentioned by Mary Ann at the last meeting that one of the items that she would like added to our future agenda items is the CEDA, the Joint Economic Development Agreement that we have with the township for the Center for Business and Education site. And as it so happens, we do have a fifth Monday in September, September 29th, I happened to get an email from Chris Mutcher, Township Trustee, I did send an email, Judy sent an email out to council to see about availability, I don't know that we heard from you because you weren't in town, Lori unfortunately isn't available, so we may want to look at a different schedule, but in addition, down in that second paragraph, I have a list of the, the fourth and fifth Mondays through 2015, taking out the ones that are right around the holidays, the ones in December, so if we, if we don't want to do September 29th, maybe, and then I also include, and we've talked about the CEDA, we just, the Covered Bridge just came up, there are a number of other items, Glen Forest Cemetery, that there is actually some property there that they are interested in, in having use of at the cemetery, we know and, and council has written a supportive letter about the new firehouse, it would be good to get an update on that, those I think are the, are the most important things. I think shared services also would be a good thing to talk about, we, I, I assume that staff, the staff does work with the township staff as much as they can, but it would be good to get an update on that. And there comes a land trust, you know, with priorities related to, to easements. And there comes a land trust, you know, with priorities related to easements and easement preservation, how they are addressing it would be good to. Those are the ones that kind of rose to the top. That'll take about two weeks to talk about.
Yeah, we've got plenty.
So are you looking for a date?
Right. I mean, if we can't do September 29th.
I think I'm the only, if I, I might be the only one.
I may be having a medical procedure and I don't know when that's going to be, but it probably would be then.
Okay.
So let's, then let's leave that. Let's.
October 27th.
October 27th would appeal to me. I mean, I would like to get it done. I mean, it's been so, it's been, we were talking about this back in 2012 and didn't do it then. So if we could maybe target the 27th of October, how does everybody?
Looks okay for me.
Guess I better look at mine.
And then will this need an okay from Township Trustees as well?
Yeah, well, and I asked Chris to get them to approve tonight. I didn't, I didn't say anything about another meeting, but I will let him know that we're, that we're looking at October 27th. So I will talk to Chris about that. And then we can have a little bit more input into an agenda at our next meeting. Let's see, managers' report.
We've already covered the first item, which was the trash cans along Xenia and Dayton. We are still looking for the final piece for the Beaver flow-through device. I actually got a lead possibly on it today for Jason, and I know that Mary Ann potentially has an idea and is going to get with Jason on that. I know Jason would really like to finish and have it done, so hopefully.
And the Beavers would, too.
Yeah. I think everybody would be very happy. So we are working on that. We did issue the RFP for Sutton Farm, but during the pre-bid meeting, a couple of the contractors asked for schematics. We are having the schematics drawn, but we're going to go ahead and open the bid submittals on Monday as planned because we think that everybody has a good enough understanding of the, of the project that it's, it's okay to go ahead and do that. Jason, you concur with that?
Yes.
So we're going to go ahead and open that. If we do not find what we think we need or anything that is appropriate, we can always reissue it. We always have the right to reject all bids. So we're just going to proceed at this point and hope it doesn't put us any further behind. We did schedule, we did evaluate the submissions for the water plant consultant on Friday. We had a committee of six people. It included Karen, Jerry, myself, Joe Bates, Johnny Burns, and Scott Straley from Ohio RCAP, which is the Rural Communities Assistance Program. We evaluated the six submissions and chose, ranked them according to the criteria that we had set forth. We are going to invite back the top three for presentations to council, and those three firms are HNTB, Burgess and NiPole, and Hazen and Sawyer.
And Hazen and Sawyer slash LJB.
Slash LJB. Those were the three top ranking firms out of the six that were submitted, that submitted proposals. I will make them all aware of that. What we need to do is schedule a night for these folks to come and make a presentation to council. And I also need for council to let me know any specific questions that you want addressed about their qualifications to do this, or their process for doing this during their 15-minute presentation. Each, each one of them's going to have 15 minutes presentation and 15-minute question and answer afterward for council and the public, well, council, I think we decided, and not, maybe not the public.
But it'll be a public meeting, so the public can be there.
Correct.
And I mean, we're usually pretty flexible, but I think that if there was some burning question, we could probably deal with it.
Right, and so.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I think we have to, public has to be allowed to ask questions if they happen.
So if council would submit any questions that you want answered during the presentation, for instance, some of the things that the committee came up with was that we wanted the personnel who would be actively involved in the project to be present at that presentation. We want to put, you know, eyes on the people who are going to be doing it. So if council could, we might as well pick a date while we're, while we're scheduling extra.
Could you tell me the names of those organizations first?
HNTB, it's four initials, and it's the four principles, and I never can get the names.
All right.
Burgess and NiPole.
That's at NiPole.
N-I-P-L-E.
Okay.
And Hazen and Sawyer slash.
LJB.
LJB.
Okay, yeah, I got that. And then the other thing, did you say, so will they, they be, I assume, submitting to us a packet of materials, each of them?
They will, ahead of time, and each of you will get that. We, they submitted an RFQ packet for this evaluation. Now they're going to submit an RFP.
Yes.
Which includes, we're going to do this, 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 and this for this amount of money.
Right.
And then they'll make that presentation to council, and at that point, then council will make a determination on to which one of those three becomes our consultant to go through the process of the design part of Design Bill.
Okay.
So we need to find a date that we can do that, so that I could let them know.
So all three at the same night?
All three the same night, just at different times.
Okay. So this will not be at a regular meeting, but especially?
No.
Thinking, starting at six, guessing? Yeah, if we can start at six.
Well, which states are we doing? We're already doing budget things in October, correct?
With regular meetings.
At regular meetings.
As part of the regular meeting.
Yes.
So we may want, we may actually, I had forgotten completely about this, so we may want to reschedule the Township Trustee.
Yeah, it's going to be an awful lot. We're having early meetings.
Yeah.
And.
We could actually schedule the presentation for October 27th.
Why don't we do that?
At 6 o'clock, if you want to do that, and then just figure out a different date for the.
Well, we don't, in the next, so we're going to be in, for the Township Trustees, we're going to be into 2015 because I don't think anybody's going to want to do November 24th. That just seems a little too close to Thanksgiving. So we're probably looking, alternatively, say January 26th. So October 27th will be.
And I will schedule one at 6:00, one at 6:30, and one at 7:00.
October 27th. Why are we starting at 6:00, though?
Karen had just requested.
If we can, I mean, if we, if you don't want to, we don't have to.
That's fine. 6:00 is okay. Yeah. I'm the one who usually has the biggest problem with it, but.
That's okay.
It'll be okay.
I mean, most of these folks are probably driving at least an hour or more, coming from Cincinnati and Columbus primarily.
I know two of them are from Cincinnati, yes, and one from Columbus. The information there on the Book III utility accounts was just an FYI for council in case you got any questions for, they hit one key wrong during the input downstairs in the utility office, and it printed all of the Book III bills with a zero balance, which would have been a really nice gift for everyone, but they had to go back in and correct that and reprint that. But if someone was late paying their bills because of that, they did not get charged a late fee. Project update. We have a lot going on, and Karen had actually asked me to prepare a, kind of a visual representation for you. I did not get a chance to do that, but I did include in here an update on all of the projects that are going on. Mills Lawn sidewalks will begin, hopefully, next week is what we were hoping for. Jason, is that still the latter part of next week?
Yep.
Okay. Gomp Hart ballfields will not be until late October. Streetscape will not start till after street fair because he is still working over on Limestone Street and Cemetery Street, and we didn't want to put him way behind. Sutton Farm is pending, the Water Plant Consultant is pending, and the Legal Services RFQ is We have, you will see attached the information on the 2015 International Truck. It was put into the budget this year to make the initial payment on the truck and then four additional payments after that. In the meantime, the state bid price for this truck has gone up, and so Jason looked into some of the financing. And what we would like to do is to go ahead and order the truck, and when I say order the truck, that truck's not going to come in for four to six months?
Yeah, basically, basically six months because that truck will be a cabin chassis, and then it'll have to go to another party to get the bed, hydraulics, spreader.
Wow.
Plow, everything else.
So what, what we propose to do, instead of financing this truck for five years, they also have a seven-year lease program that we can pay off in six years, and I know that gets really confusing, but it does save quite a bit in interest if we do that. And the difference in price and what needs to be approved by council tonight is $14,125 over what was initially approved in this year's budget for this truck. Now that $14,000 would be spread out over the five year, or six years that we're going to take to pay this off.
I've got a question. So I, I went to a very interesting meeting with the Green County Township Association. Bob Geier is all up in arms about salt. I mean, there's going to be a huge problem with salt this year. There isn't enough, the cost has doubled.
Yes.
So what he said he is doing, and what they did last year, is they're combining half road salt and half grit and beet heat.
Yes.
Do you, do we have the ability to use the beet juice?
We don't have an applicator for that. What council has approved is us to have the V-Box spreaders, which has the containment on the side, which would add that beet juice as the salt is being spread or being put down. That's the only way that we can apply it as of right now because we, we simply don't have the equipment to put it out.
So, but, but can it, I mean, I guess that's my question, if we're ordering a new truck, if the salt situation is going to, plus environmentally, now I haven't heard any environmental input on the beet juice. I can't imagine that it's a problem. But environmentally, I'd rather be putting beet juice on the ground than salt. So, you know, it may be something we want to go to.
Well, keep in mind, though, the beet juice and the beet heat, quote unquote, is more of a pre-treatment.
Right.
And that is just to prevent the compacted snow from icing up on your roads. That's, that's basically all it is.
But what about the grit? Because they're mixing in them with grit, so then that gives you more traction.
Grit we cannot use because we have catch basins. If it gets down in our, in our sanitary or in our storm, it's going to cause a blockage. So if we run 100% grit now, if we, if we trim it down to meet that recipe that Bob Geier has sent over, it might work, but we'll have to do a couple of applications to where we're actually out there visualizing how much is going into our gutters, how much is going into our sanitary.
Okay. And the beet juice, I want to say, is, you'll see a lot of times if you're driving around and it's supposed to snow that night, you'll see these little lines on the road. That's beet juice. They go through and they put it down before anything happens, so.
Yep.
So.
Sounds like you've looked into it. It sounds like you've.
Right, so our new truck will, will it be any better for, in terms of alternatives?
Yes, basically everything that this truck will have on it, will have the stainless steel bed, stainless steel spreader. This truck will give us more life than the previous ones because we haven't had that ability. We haven't put a stainless steel bed on there. Most of it's road salt. It's eating up from underneath. I would like to get this truck in, have it Z-barred it underneath, and keep that well, so, I mean, it would give us more useful life. Also, we'll have that V-Box spreader to where we could put that beet heat on there and mix it with our salt, or the castor chloride, which the state does all the time, and just, it works a lot better in sub-zero temperatures.
Okay.
And are you, do we have, do we have salt?
We do have salt. Our salt bin is currently full.
Okay.
So we have roughly about 180 tons. Bob said that we could get more at the price of what he charged us last year. However, when all that goes, he's going to have to charge us double.
And apparently Beaver Creek has excess. I think Beaver Creek and maybe Xenia both have excess.
Yeah, I've talked to John over at Beaver Creek about maybe purchasing some if our supplies run low. I've also taken Patty's advice and called Morton Salt. We are on their list. They could possibly bring us some, but.
And the plan is, the long-term plan, Jason, not to interrupt you, is to make ourselves a direct customer of Morton Salt. It's a lot more economical, and you also, if you run out of salt, you contract for a certain amount of salt, but you don't have to take delivery all at the same time. And so you can, you can take what you can hold, which is 180 tons for us. If you start running low, you can call and say, give me my next delivery, and they'll bring it up, and it's all included in the per-ton price.
Yeah. So we're not wasting our man-hours or our machine-hours going down there to get it and bring it back.
And it does, it does save money.
Yes.
So, so what do you need from us? I assume we're going to have to have legislation to increase that price or not to?
Well, you're. It's under the $15,000.
Yeah.
I think it just verbalized it. As long as it's under $15,000.
Okay, then.
Verbally approve the difference in the price.
Okay, that's fine, yeah. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the last thing I have is, I got a notice last week, Friday, actually. DPNL has officially filed with the state to terminate the contracts of certain villages at the end of the year.
Right.
Also AMP, on our behalf, on behalf of the group of folks in this area whose contracts are being terminated, is filing a protest with the state, saying that our current prices should continue until the new negotiated price can be, reasonable price can be approved. And so I will keep you posted as that progresses, but I really don't have any more to report on that right now.
Is there anything, so, so far AMP doesn't need anything from us?
No.
Any kind of resolution or?
No, I already gave them our approval to participate in filing a protest on our behalf. AMP will be picking up the charges for the consultant to file those protests as part of our membership, and so we'll be moving forward.
Okay. Thank you. Clerks' report?
Business as usual. It was so, my committee reports were so brief that I decided not to waste the paper, so it's online, but it was pretty, pretty much business as usual.
Thanks, Judy. Maybe not quite so much for you, but that's another matter. Standing reports, Lori?
Oh, I don't think I've got any. Your Standing Commission is hoping to meet, I think, Monday, the 22nd.
Monday, yes.
Yes, yes. Sorry.
That's okay, I was just thinking.
All of a sudden, yeah. It's, and it's not on my calendar, so that needs to change. But, yes, so we are going to be meeting because we have a couple of items, but we haven't met before, so I don't really have anything more to report.
The 15th. Today's the 15th.
Today's the 15th.
Today's the 15th. So it's 22nd. No, Planning Commission's meeting October 15th. You're not meeting.
Oh, we're not meeting until October.
Yeah.
Okay, we couldn't get it to work out. That's right.
Oh, that's.
We tried to make it work and we didn't. No wonder it's not on my calendar. I was actually thinking, so that's it.
Okay. Jerry?
Mediation, nothing. Community resources, we didn't have a quorum at the last meeting, so they just kind of discussed what they might do for the. Referendum vote. And all of the, the council members and the trustees decided that we would not participate in any meetings that they would have as it related to the referendum.
All right.
And let's see, library, they're happy that we're moving forward with the new roof.
Brian, anything in addition?
Yeah, I mean, it seemed like I would have covered it all, right? But I-
Yeah, I mean, it seemed like I would have covered it all, right? But I did want to mention Human Relations Commission, two important updates. One is yellow springshelp.org, which is the online resource guide that we've been working on, is live. We actually have a training manual now that was put together on how to use it, and we're going to have a very busy Miller fellow getting that populated. So that's really exciting. And the second thing is, I just wanted to mention, and actually, both of these are initiatives that were largely driven by Linda Radolsky. We have the Mental Health First Aid, which is the outcropping of the original vision with the Harmony Rain Barrel that created seed money to get this to happen, and the response has been amazing. We wanted to limit it to 20 people. The first one's going to be on October 3rd, and it's a full-day training. Actually, Karen's going to be there. And it's basically about, you know, folks that, you know, interact with people that have mental health issues or other issues, emotional issues, get some on-the-ground training on how to respond to that. So we are now overbooked, and so we will be continuing to do this. But it's been great, you know, the police department, a lot of the organizations downtown, a lot of people have been coming forward, the churches, and are excited about this, so I think it's cool. Community Access Panel, we actually have a nomination, and I think everybody's got this at the table. Tim Barhorst has applied to join Community Access Panel, and I had mentioned that we had one of our members, we have five plus the liaison. One of our members has resigned, so we were looking to fill a spot. And the great thing about Tim is that he's been part of the Springsnet Group, which is working on the municipal broadband that we agreed last month, Community Access Panel would take on on behalf of council. The other thing is, we did go through the new process of having two interviews, so I interviewed Tim and so did Jerry. And I don't know, Jerry, if you have any comments or.
No, I was impressed with his qualifications and had a chat with him, and I feel he could be a good fit for the.
Yeah, and the other thing we specifically asked is any chance of a conflict of interest based on, you know, if we did move forward with this. And clearly, that's not something that Tim's working on. He has that knowledge, but he's actually his own consultant, so that is not an issue. So, yeah, I would like to nominate Tim Barhorst to fill our fifth spot on the cap.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And, yeah, we covered everything on the Public Art Commission side, so.
Mary Ann?
The Energy Board did not meet. Actually, the last two meetings has, eh, it has not met. And in terms of the Environmental Commission, we've had a couple people submit applications, and there are some other people who I've had some conversations with that I plan on talking with this week, but we don't have enough people yet to interview people, okay?
Can I ask a question? I looked at the announcement in the YS News for this, and it mentions Environmental Commission meeting on the 2nd and 4th Thursday.
Oh, really?
Is that, is that the plan?
No.
You can have whatever plan you want.
Okay.
I think that might be when the old environmental.
Okay, because I was thinking, if we are going to run that again, maybe we should take that out, just because two meetings a month may look.
Right. I agree. It always felt excessive. There.
I'll talk with you about that.
There was a difficulty getting that changed.
Because no date had been chosen or anything, so you might want to just, you can either say it'll meet once a month to be arranged, or.
Yeah, something like that, I think would be good.
Right, yeah, that's what I would do.
Once a month to be determined.
Because they'll be determined by the members of the commission.
Right. So anyway, so I just, not that that was a bad.
Thank you for noting that.
Good catch.
Me, the chamber, I mentioned the meeting that we have this Thursday at noon down in A and B about social media. There will be social media experts there to talk about how to use Facebook and Twitter and other social media to market your business. And VRPC, the packet included, minutes from our last meeting, things have been pretty quiet, although everybody is happy that there was like a temporary extension of the trust fund, for Highway Trust Fund. So there at least is some money to spend. So then we, Judy's added, on future agenda items, Judy's added all of the budget hearings and noted that those meetings are all starting at 6:00. And hopefully, at the next meeting, we, do you, no, I guess we won't have an RFP for a while. Then we need to add, let's add for October 27th is the special meeting for the.
Water.
Water plant consultants.
And you do have the ordinance coming back.
Right. Right. The signage or the no parking ordinance.
You need an update from HRC on the public forum?
Yes.
Okay, then anything else that comes up in the meantime? Next, I will entertain a motion to, for the purpose of, to go into executive session for the purpose of discussion of the employment of a public official, and there may be, excuse me, Jason.
Can I ask something?
Sure, yeah, sorry.
Sorry, I didn't bring this up when Patty was talking about it. But projects, the sanitary is completed on East Limestone, and probably about 85% of the storm is completed. They're running into some shallow bedrock that they're having to jackhammer out of there, so that project should be completed here pretty soon. They're really doing a great job. So they just have to come up to the motel and then into the library alleyway, and they should be done.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. So a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussion of the employment of a public official, and we may have information to report when we do come out of executive session.
Okay.
But we are not going to, we have no idea how long that will be.
I move that we go into executive session with the purpose of discussion of employment of a public official.
Second.
Judy, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Wintrae.
Yes.
Aslan.
Yes.
Yes.
McQueen.
Yes.
And I should also say, with our attorney present, thank you, Chris.
Budget session, budget session.
Are we entering them all? Yes. It's not there.
Does anybody need to take a break?
Yes.